Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of June 8th. As always, I would like to remind everyone this meeting is being recorded and is also being broadcast live for use at a later date. I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you also please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have several guests here tonight, so I'm going to jump around a little bit on the agenda this evening for the sake of getting some people in and out. They have to get back at it tomorrow in the district. So bear with me, please. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of May 29th, 2018.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous. We have no student advisory this evening, so we're going to move right on. We're going to move to old business. We have these three gentlemen that have been working very diligently on a regional agreement, amendment committee, and they are here this evening to tell us what the very minor changes were. So, if you'd like to have the floor, Steve?
For the record, I'm Steve Hemmard. I'm the Assistant Executive Director for the Regional School Association. I head up our consulting group. And with us is Mac Reed and Steve Donovan, who were your primary people that worked on the project. Just for a little background, when you were going to town meeting, there were some issues concerning the legal councils from each town, the length of time they had to review, and that's why it wound up being passed over. I then had conversations with your superintendent, and then I contacted your council and the council from each of the two towns. And on May 24th, we were on a conference call reviewing what were the issues that they had. And just to mention those to you, under Section 5 Capitol Costs, the one thing that they wanted to add to that is that Capitol costs shall include all expenses described in DESE's chart of accounts and the 700 function code, and wanted to add, as may be modified by DESE from time to time. And I would add, if we go on with any of these changes, there were no substantial changes. There were clarifications. Chris Lynch has seen these, and she has approved that, that you'd have no problems with the agreement with these changes made to be approved by the department. The next thing was under the elementary schools, and the concern was on the debt. And one of the things under, let's go back for a second, under C apportionment of capital costs, III, elementary schools, it originally read, "A project will be presented to the selectmen of the town for which capital improvements are requested." And they requested to go back to what was in your original agreement. It said, "An article will be presented to the selectmen's office of the town for which capital improvements are requested, and approval of the voters will be required in order for the work to proceed." That means that, in other words, you send it to them, the voters in each town have to approve, vote, raise and appropriate the money for that particular project. I understand what your, my recommendations, what you have is a capital plan. You would present that each year to the towns to go into the annual town meeting and appropriate the funding if you need to. The next section was D debt, and this was just to make clear on the debt, who has what debt. And number two, they added the following. "Each member town shall be responsible for paying the debt incurred for its respective elementary and middle schools pursuant to Section 5, C3 above. Otherwise, each member town share of debt incurred for capital costs associated with the high school." And it goes on to say from there that it would be, the way that would happen is you go per pupil, how you divide that up for that. So basically, what it was trying to clarify, and that's all it was, was those are the only sections they did. I was on the phone for an hour with them, in that they're clarifying that that, again, is the debt, that the elementary or middle school is a capital project, that the towns are responsible for that. If it's here at the high school, then the region is responsible, and they would be assessed. And then again, on the capital plans for the elementary that you would present to them, projects need to be done, and they have to vote, which would have to raise the money in order to do that project. So it was just a clarification that they all felt comfortable. This was sent, I did this and sent it back to them. I received an email from each of the lawyers, three, their council, and the two towns, saying if they approved, they have no problems with recommending this in a fall town meeting. And I sent copies to your superintendent and your business manager of them saying they'd accept this. Also, this went to Chris Lynch, as I said earlier, and she said, yes, no problems. Her only comment was out of that is that maybe if something happens at a building, say something, you got a hurricane coming through, and you had a roof blow off, well, then that obviously had to take its emergency, take care of those things appropriately. But that's nothing that your regional agreement could perceive what's going to happen in the future. But again, they'd be responsible to take care of that, you'd notify them, and then the selectmen would have to have a mechanism by which there was to be repaired. That's all that they wanted changed, and everybody, they've all approved it. And so our recommendations to you would be is that you vote to approve this and then send it back out to your selectmen for that process to go through at the fall town meetings.
An entertaining motion to approve the document is amended.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hemmard before, or for Mac Reed? Fred?
And just because I enjoy saying, I want to thank the men from Mars. It was a pleasure working with you gentlemen.
I want to say Mac and Steve did a great job. It's not easy going through all these things and making sure everything there, especially we dealt with the Department of Education. Chris Lynch was great to work with and gave good recommendations, so we got through that process, so.
Gentlemen, I'd like to thank both of you for attending all those meetings. They weren't easy. There was a lot of clarifications and questions, and we brought in the big gun, and I'd like to thank you also, Steve. So, is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to comment on the fact that I think they had actually a wonderful opportunity where they had all three legal councils able to meet at the same time. That's nothing short of a miracle.
A week to do that.
And they needed to pull it off, and they did. So I echo what you all have said. It's been terrific working with you. The previous amendment was typed on in Apple IIe, so now we're moving into 2018, 2019 with a new improved regional agreement amendment, and it will go to town meetings in the fall. So, thank you so much.
I would just add, both lawyers, all three lawyers wanted to get this to work, so they did want to work together, so.
They really did, didn't they?
They wanted, they did their clients for that. I've also indicated to Ruth, and I've also indicated to your new superintendent in the fall, I'll gladly attend your town meeting, so if there's questions on that, because any questions, I'd be glad to be there.
Any other questions before I move to the vote? Discussion? All those in favor? In unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move this document, for those who are not familiar with it, from something that was written and revised and changed and written on in the early 90s to 2018, and it's something that we wanted to get cleaned up, so it appears that we have it cleaned up. All right. That document has to go to the boards of selectmen?
Should put that on the agenda, really for their next meeting.
They have to vote it. It has to go back to DESI as amended?
No, it's all set. DESI, it's what he said, DESI's fine.
Okay. And then it has to go to town meeting in the fall, and if Whitman is going to run a special meeting, if not, it'll be May for them, so. But I hear that there's a chance of they have-
They hope to be able to do it in the fall. They know it's important to get it done. So, good progress.
Okay. Next up is introduction of new principals.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Jeff Simonak to come forward, because these are the folks who are going to be working with him as we move into the 2018-2019 school year. So as you know, we had several search committees. We had wonderful people helping us with those. Here at the high school, Lauren Matheson, coordinator of special education at the high school, coordinated the high school search. For the search for Indian Head School, Bill Tranter took care of that. And Karen Downey was involved with the Whitman Middle School and has been helping us as well with the other opening at Duval. So I just want to thank them and then turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Dr. Whitman. It's a pleasure to introduce our three new folks. Jill Catrow is going to be the new principal at Indian Head School. We introduced her to the staff the other day. Dr. Christopher Jones is the new high school principal. He was introduced to the staff today. And the guy in the far corner, I don't think Whitman Middle knows who it is, but Mr. Michael Grable is the new principal at Whitman Middle. His staff knows him pretty well. And he's been holding the fort while Mr. Pharoah's been away in New York City. It's been a, it's been a great search process. I think we have fantastic people in place right now. Staff reaction to the folks that are here has been extremely positive. They were accessible and answered questions today and yesterday. Jill, I think, going over to McQuann and Indian Head and relieving some anxiety for the teachers was really important. Chris was able to meet my staff today, or my former staff today, and I think was able to have a little bit of a back and forth with folks. He's had some conversations with my assistant, and he's met with Bob already, so we have some plans already for the summer. And Mike has been holding the fort, like I said, but is transitioning into that new role. And I think we have a really good team in place. We are hopefully going to finish up on Friday. We have some interviews on Friday for the Duval principal position, and hopefully we can finish that up and let you folks know where we're at early next week. Do you have any questions for these folks? Do you want to say anything?
I just wanted to thank everybody so much for this opportunity. I'm so excited to be part of Indian Head and part of your school district, and I'm just so excited to jump right in and get going. I'm just really excited for this opportunity to show you what we can do, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Without being too redundant, I'm excited as well. You know, I hear great things about Whitman Hansen Regional High School, and I really look forward to stepping into this position and taking even greater heights and rallies.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
I just want to apologize for my address. I kind of give off to John's. Then I found out that I was being introduced tonight, so I think George was a little excited to go on a trip, if you have to tell me. I'm very excited about being in the position, and I can't wait to get to it.
You didn't forget.
You picked your pants on.
George is getting picked up.
Mike, we'll take that out of George and away to date.
But I want to reiterate and thank Bill, Karen, and Lauren for doing this. This is, this is a tedious process in going through resumes and answering questions and meeting upon meeting, and then coming up with consensus and putting forth very good candidates for us to select. And I think we really have a good team going forward come July 1.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
This evening, we're also going to welcome Tina Sidstone, who is going to be giving the CPAC report. This is the Special Ed Parent Advisory Council. And this is all part of special education here at Whitman Hansen. They meet regularly, they have speakers, they do a variety of different things. In the upcoming school year, 2018-2019, Whitman Hansen will be going through a coordinated program review. And one of those things is really looking at our special education program. And they do that because we get money from the federal government to fund special education, about $1 million, which really does help us. So clearly, having a parents advisory council is very important to the program. So we're glad you could be here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to introduce as well Jim Fitzgerald. He is the co-chair. We co-chair the team together. So this year, we kind of took the CPAC, which kind of was, I don't want to say nonexistent, it just wasn't very popular. Most people didn't even know the district had one. We took it this year. We kind of tried to build it up this year. So we held eight meetings this year from October through, we have one again next week, compared to the four or six that were normal the annual, so we've definitely kind of hyped it up. We've increased our attendance. We had 24 different parents show up this year, as crazy as that's a little number for the population of special ed. It's a bonus. We had 12 at the most at one meeting. But I thought that was good numbers. For the first meeting, we had four of us show up, and by the end, we had over 24 throughout the course of the year, which I thought was a really big thing for us. It was a good way to do it. Something that Whitman Hansen, at least if they've had it, they haven't had it for years. We've created bylaws and a mission statement, so that way we can really get this up and running. Roland, I created some social media. Any of you on the town pages probably see me blasting all this, come to our meetings all over the place, and I'm just trying to get the word out there. The Whitman Hansen Express has been really good. They've been posting it. We elected some school official, I mean, some board members on the team. So we have our co-chairs, we have a secretary, we have a school representative for each school. Unfortunately, we don't have anyone for preschool or Whitman Middle yet, because we haven't had anyone attend the meetings from those, so no one has been able to volunteer for that role yet, but hopefully we'll get them soon. Luckily, Lisa Forbes has been helping us. We're going to have a CPAC page right on the district, so that way the parents can try to find us that way as well. I'm trying to think. We sent out a survey at the beginning of the school year. It was more of a, when's good dates for you, what topics could the CPAC bring into you to help out, do we even know that we exist type of questions, as well as the district had an open-ended question on, like, what could we do better? So we got some good feedback. We take the top priorities. One of the biggest things that people want is a resource. They need resources. People don't necessarily know resources, so we're going to work on something, hopefully big, to do work with that. So that's kind of where we're standing right now. And the last thing, before I let Jim take over, is we're going to start exploring, opening up a nonprofit to start fundraising so that we can bring some speakers in and not, you know, on the district's dime. So we were pretty lucky this year. We brought school people in, and the district's attorney came in and did the annual basics rights one, but we're going to try to see if we can't up this up. So that's what we've done so far this year, and I'll let Jim talk about what our plans are for next year. Very exciting.
Great. Thank you, Tina.
Yeah. We are very excited for the next school year. I have to say, of course, one of the key things is we want to promote awareness of our group. That being said, back in September, I don't think I know what the CPAC was, and now I'm the co-chair, so. We've come a far, long way, and we have, we have grown over the course of this year and hope to continue to grow. To kind of publicize that, we're hoping to create some brochures, just informational brochures about the CPAC, include like a welcome letter, and attend school events like open houses as well. We also are planning to have an article in the Whitman Hansen Express later this summer. So just trying to get awareness out there that our group exists, that, you know, people are welcome to come and participate, and we're looking forward to it. For next year, we have 10 meetings planned that will start in September and run through June. Are we doing monthly, right? Yeah. Monthly meetings focusing on student safety, meet and greets with the administration and special education staff, and feedback on kind of all the transitions that our district has been going through. We're also planning our first annual, so there'll be many more to come, CPAC Family Picnic Day, where we're hoping to partner with local first responders to come and interact with special education students, you know, have some lunch, and just have a nice event there. We're also looking into other agencies as well to present. We had the Arc of Greater Plymouth and of Brockton present this year, so we're hoping to build on that, have some other agencies come out. And then lastly, as Tina was saying, you know, in the results of the survey that we sent out, definitely learning and information about resources was a common theme. And so we're in the stages of planning a resource fair. We hope to have by, in early fall 2019, where we can have kind of all sorts of agencies and businesses come out, and people have access to information and get to learn more about resources in the area for students with special needs. So we're very, very excited about it. I'm very excited to be working. I give Tina all the credit because she's, you know, she really built this up over the past year, and I'm looking forward to help out in the coming year.
Thank you.
Well, and thank you for your leadership with this. It's terrific, and I think your plans for the upcoming year are exciting and get the momentum going. It would be terrific.
Thank you very much. I think you've done a great job. I see it. I think you've done a great job Facebook-wise. I've seen quite a few Facebook things.
Do you see me if I like, Jill? Whitman has like one Facebook page, Whitman Hansen's got like 20, so I try to put it everywhere I can find it, so.
Whitman has plenty. There's more than one.
Is there? I'll have to find the others.
There's a few.
I just want to commend Tina and I, and I'm going to be at their next CPAC meeting, kind of introducing myself as the superintendent. They have some great ideas for next year, and I think supporting that and a couple things to talk about school safety. Sometimes we miss a population of students when we talk about school safety, and we're going to try to meet, because of our relationships with our first responders, bring them in and educate them about some of our most needed children in our district. So at school and at home. So these are the types of things that, they have some great ideas. The resource fair next sprint, I think, is going to knock it out of the park, because that's what our parents need. They need someone outside of the school, where can they reach out for their child once they graduate from their parents. These folks, I want to give them a lot of credit. They've been reaching out to me. I'm going to be in there in September, but looking at our local agency within the district, so I think getting our town officials involved and our local agencies involved in their group is a great idea, and I think it's a great kickoff.
I could-
Fred, go ahead.
Would you be opposed to a school committee member attending your meetings?
No, absolutely.
Number one. Because time permitting, I'd love to, I'd love to come. Also-
We post them on the website, so you can pull them out.
Yep, it's the second Tuesday of the month is where our fallback is right now, so if you want to stay.
And I know Steve here works tirelessly with our collaboratives, and perhaps there's, you know, a meeting of the minds, so to speak, and some services that the collaboratives can provide are pathways, you know, some different things that, you know, just informational, so to speak.
Thank you.
It'd probably be a good idea to formulate an email chain, maybe with the committee?
Okay.
So we would, we kind of have a heads up on what you're doing if any of us want to attend?
Sure, absolutely.
Or try to help you. Thank you very much for what you're doing. It's very, very well needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to switch down to Bob Rogers?
Yeah, I was going to do that next.
Bob, why don't you come up? Oh, I think we gave them to them.
Oh, was it? I don't know if it was in the packet or not.
I didn't get them.
Oh, you did, then, okay.
Yeah, but that's all right.
Okay, that's terrific.
Whatever you sent to me, I sent to Michelle for the packet.
Excellent. Excellent. So, good evening. Athletic season is winding down. Our girls lacrosse team had an exciting win at Nauset last night. The MIA did not give us much time. They actually played today at Notre Dame. It was not a very pretty result. They're very good, but our girls left with smiles on their face. They had a great season. And our baseball team is the last team that's left. They are competing tomorrow at home in the first round of the state tournament against Nauset. Hopefully, the team is poised to have a good run. We have a few athletes left for the hip-tachelon and the decathlon. Other than that, that will wrap up the athletic season, and you will soon find, I'll find a way through Dr. Whitner to get you guys a link to the end-of-the-year report. That is almost done. We're just waiting for those last few sports to go. So I have two items tonight that I wanted to present to you. The first one's, I think, going to be pretty easy, and that is, we need a new scoreboard at the turf field. There are 36 panels in that current scoreboard that we have that is quite old, and each one of those to replace costs between $1,600 and $2,000. We've already had to replace four of them. The main panel, which is the minute number on the scoreboard, has just died on us, so we have to, if we keep that scoreboard, we're going to have to replace it. The entire thing is going to keep dying. We have frequency problems with it in terms of the connection between the scoreboard and our controller. If you've ever been to the game and see it look kind of funky, I know Michelle said she saw that at one of the games, yes. So the bottom line is, we need a new scoreboard. We tried to get it through the capital plan in the towns, and it just, obviously, there are a lot of priorities. So I started to figure out, try to, how can I get it without needing the school or the towns to have to pay? So we've been able to secure a $25,000 donation from the Frizzoli Foundation. J.J. Frizzoli was a terrific football player, wrestler, and student athlete here at Whitman Hansen. They've been very generous. They gave out some scholarships in this first year, the foundation did, and they've committed $25,000 to this project. His name will be on the scoreboard at some point. The picture that you guys receive, there will be an additional panel at the bottom, and part of that will recognize J.J. Frizzoli and remember him, which I think is really good, because he represented the ideals that we want here at Whitman Hansen. In addition to that, there will be the two advertising panels that you see. Those sponsors are not committed, but I have been in conversations with them, and I made this up so they could see what it would look like, and I'll be looking for two more sponsors as well. In addition to that, that panel that you see where you can see the quarterback, that is a video panel, which is going to open up so many doors for us to be able to raise revenue here at Whitman Hansen for our athletic program. As you all know, we are one of the least funded athletic programs, maybe the least funded athletic program in our league. Pretty much, we don't fund for officials. We don't fund for buses. We don't fund for the athletic trainer. We don't fund for uniforms. We don't fund for equipment. It's very difficult to sustain our athletic program with a limited budget, and we make it work through fundraising, through gate receipts, and through user fees. And we really don't want to raise the user fees, because our community, frankly, a lot of families can't afford that. So I think this scoreboard, to have the ability to put advertising on it, could be a sustainable source of revenue moving forward, which would mean the committee would have to. There is the policy, the advertising policy, and what I'm asking this committee to do, a couple of things in regards to this. The first one is to accept the donations for the scoreboard, the first from the Frizzoli Foundation, and then from, and I would certainly let you know who the other sponsors will be, but allow me to go try to get sponsors for this scoreboard, so that we don't have to ask for any money. And then the other part of that would be for you to give myself, Dr. Jones, and the superintendent, Mr. Simonak, to be able to contract for advertisers on that scoreboard at soccer games, at playoff games, at football games, at Thanksgiving, because I think it's a great way for community members to get their message out. That video board is also a safety issue. If you've been to a football game or a soccer game, it's hard to hear the PA. It's hard to hear what the announcer says about where to park, where not to park, where the safety officers are. We're going to be able to put really important messages that people that attend our events can see, to be able to recognize students that are doing great in the community. This scoreboard, I think, will have a, have a great effect on not just our athletic program, but our school community. So that's what I'm asking you guys to do, is to allow us to accept the donations that will help fund this. I will have to fund a portion of this, because we have to do this very soon, through my, through our athletic revolving account, which I can say we have that money right now to do that, and we will replenish it as we get the advertisers to sustain this. So that's what I'm looking for the committee to do tonight as it relates to this scoreboard. And the scoreboard, by the way, this is a Nevco scoreboard. I have gone out to requesting other biz to try to get a better price. This roughly, the cost of this will be roughly $50,000 installed, but there is, there's another really reputable scoreboard company who's going to give me a very similar type scoreboard, and they're going to give me a quote on that. I'm hoping to kind of pit these two guys against each other and maybe get a better price, so. But that's, that's where we are with that.
If I could add something before you have a discussion. We do have a policy, KHB, called Advertising in Schools. And what that says essentially is, let's say Bob does the scoreboard, and you all determine that you're going to allow other organizations to advertise on the bottom of it. So that needs to go to the high school principal, in this case, and then also to the superintendent for final approval. The rates, however, are set by the school committee. So as you move forward with this, I think you'll be working with Chris and Jeff and the committee to determine what would those rates be as the scoreboard gets up and running. But that's essentially what the policy is.
Right. I think in order to make this work, I'd have to come up with some creative packages for the community in terms of by this many events, this is the number of times we'll play it.
And then present it to this group.
Exactly.
Exactly right. And then what we typically do is just couple that with the policy so it's there, and if over time you need to change the rates, then you can do it.
Perfect.
There's also in the policy that you have to be very careful that your ads don't discriminate against any kind of a group or promote the use of tobacco, alcohol, those kinds of things.
Right. I think that we, yes, right.
I'd entertain a motion to accept one, two, and three together as printed.
I'll make that motion, providing everything is in accordance with our stated advertising policy.
We can get into that for a second and then on discussion.
Second.
Discussion. Go ahead, Fred.
Just, as Ruth was mentioning, we do have specific policies in providing, you know, that all advertisers do meet those guidelines. Yes.
Bob, in, in the placement, you and I have had this discussion several times. The scoreboard needs to be placed. It can't see it. When you're in the booth and you're announcing a game or calling a game, the scoreboard's in the wrong position.
And in a lot of places, in the bleachers as well. So it would be a lot cheaper for me to put a new scoreboard right on the existing poles, but we're not going to do that. It would also be cheaper for me to, to buy a, a simpler scoreboard, but this is going to be something that's going to move us into the next, you know, 20 years to have a scoreboard that, again, I really think this video board is going to really help us with safety and communication with the school. It's, it's where you're going to see a lot of schools move to as the technology changes. Like, to have a board like that, that board is four feet by 10 feet, the video board. That's pretty big. And to be able to have something like that at a high school venue is pretty, is going to be pretty impressive, and you're going to start to see more and more schools do that. So I don't want to put a cheap one up, and then like five years down the road, everybody else is, is following suit. The really nice scoreboard that, at the Athletic Director Conference, and they wanted Whitman Hansen to be like a charter school because they know how big we are with technology. We're the model school for huddle, which is the video platform that high schools and colleges and even the pros use, and we are the only school in the country that has, it's kind of a secret thing, but if you look in the gym, you'll see a camera system up there that records the games automatically without a camera person. And because they know that we're in that, this company, Scorevision, wanted us to be the first one to have. So basically what it is, is just a giant LED board, and it's like, costs over $200,000, and they wanted to give it to us for like $125,000. And I just like, I just can't commit us to raising that much money at this point. They wanted to fly me down to the College Baseball World Series to, to demo it. I'm like, it's, I know how great the product is, it's that I don't have the money. So they keep coming down on the price, but I don't think they'll ever come down to where we can afford it. It's beautiful, though.
You can ask.
Yeah, well, they know that, I mean, they've kept coming back, but there's all kinds of other things, the $5,000 annual licensing fee because their software is so spectacular, and right now they're not budging off of that. But anyway, this is the score, this is, so this, you're not voting on this exact scoreboard, you're voting on a scoreboard, and it's going to be roughly within that range.
Will we be able to replace on that four by 10 area?
We're hoping. That's not 100% decided yet because it's going to be some of the technology to be able to get from the press box to that, but we're hoping that that's what it would be. It wouldn't be anything controversial because we don't want the officials to take any grief, but.
Sorry, I missed that question, Fred. What was that?
Will we be able to show replays?
Oh, replays.
Yeah. Right now, my plan is mostly information, game information, and advertising. Might have like the lineup for a team, the captains, a sportsmanship message. All of our captains record a sportsmanship message. If you've been at the games, you've heard the captains give the welcome. Usually you would hear it. Now you'll see it and hear it, which I think will be a nice touch.
Bob, you have any other questions, Chris? Dan?
Yeah, Bob, the video part, besides the school, if it's a non-school use of the field, we can allow that too?
I, that's going to be something we're going to have to work on. I'm not really going to be super comfortable. They're going to have access.
No, that's my concern.
Yeah, they're going to have, they're going to have access to the scoreboard, but I don't think we're going to give them access to the video board. I think the video board will scroll a Whitman Hansen positive message about sportsmanship or whatever it is that would just continue to scroll during the game. If it was a Super Bowl, you know, their Super Bowl or something, and there was a way for us to make sure that it was done properly, we always try to work with the community the best we can because obviously they're the ones that, the reason why we have the fields and things like that. So we do the best, and they know we work with them, but I think they'd be understanding that we wouldn't want a lot of people using something that's really high-tech.
Only because, high-tech, we don't want the stuff broken. I mean, you see it all the time.
Absolutely.
One person doesn't know what they're doing.
Absolutely.
Chris?
So I know the, the motions for one, two, and three, and so as it pertains to two and three, are we saying that's, we're going to allow it, but kind of come back within the policy?
It has, everything has to come back, Chris.
So, so what we, so what we're not going to do, though, is we're not going to come back for each individual, every time we make a deal with somebody to advertise, but what we'll do is we'll come up with the rates for it. Like, once we have it, we'll say, okay, for a football game, this package is worth this much, and you guys will ratify that and decide it, and we'll decide like what kind of companies, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate.
Right.
And we'll work with Dr. Jones and, and Mr. Simonak to make sure that we're doing that.
Because I think setting those parameters, I know you mentioned in the memo, I think, maybe a couple of permanent sponsors, and so.
Yeah, so that is.
Whether it's permanent or whether it's a long-term, but.
So once I, once I'm ready to figure out who's going to be on the board permanently, I'll come back to the board to let you know, just to give you an idea. I'm trying to get $10,000 for a, for a 20-year or life of the board agreement for these sponsors. And I don't want to tell you the other couple people that will be watching it on TV, but I, I have one really big sponsor that he really wants to do it, and he's trying his best, and I think we'll get them. I think we'll get them. I'm hoping that we're going to get at least three of those for about $10,000. Now, I might have to negotiate and go back down to five, but I'll come back to you before any deal becomes ratified and I agree with any, anybody.
Chris, well, are there any stipulations with a donation as far as what type of scoreboard or anything like that that Frizzolis have?
With, I'm sorry, say that again?
With their donation, are there any stipulations in terms of what it's, I mean, I know it's going for a school board, but.
Are you talking about from the Frizzoli Foundation?
Yes.
No, they donated, they, they're all on board for whatever scoreboard we want to put in. They're going to donate $25,000. They donated the indoor batting cage that you guys accepted last year, so they've, they've been very generous. They donated $10,000. One of our students, Brett Holmes, got a $10,000 scholarship, and I think four more students got like $1,000 or $1,500.
Bob, four by 10 is pretty small. I have a Dectronics electronic.
They're bidding.
It's four by eight.
They're going to bid on.
At my business in Abingdon.
Dectronics is going to give us a bid on it.
It's pretty small.
We can get bigger, we can get bigger, but the cost goes up. So that's what it just comes down to, the cost. Four by 10 will be big enough to be able to give a message that people can read in a stadium. It's not going to be like Fenway Park where you see a great replay and it's like, oh, his foot was on the line. You're not going to see that. But you're going to be able to see the message. You're going to be able to see the advertising. I would like it to be bigger. I'm going to see what the other vendor comes up with, with maybe a cheaper price or a bigger board, but a more competitive price.
That's what I was getting at. I have a four by eight, but it's four by eight on two sides, and it was Dectronics, and it was like $26,000.
Yes. And that's not a scoreboard with it.
Right.
And that's not, yeah, so they're expensive. They're expensive. The Scorevision one, if you guys saw it, you'd be blown away. It's, it really gives high school venues and college venues the feel that you're at Yankee Stadium or Fenway Park. It's really incredible, but they're very expensive.
Yeah, but just think of the publicity they'll get from it.
I know, I know.
So to make this, so everybody understands it, the motion in the second is for one, two, and three, and the policy also is referring to the policy book that we have currently in place, which includes contacting the principal in the building and the superintendent and approval of school committee. So we have several layers of protection here before anything moves forward. This is moving it forward with all of those stipulations. Does anyone have any problem with that motion in that second speak now, please? I'm going to move to the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Bob, thank you.
Excellent. The next thing I have for you is, is unique. Fred Small actually had, had a great idea that he's been talking about for a couple of years about, for, again, we're always trying to find a way to raise revenue, and I'm not really about this as much about the revenue, although we can use every penny we get. And his idea was to maybe have some VIP parking that we sold down by, closer to the field. My concern is the Athletic Director's safety. If you're at our game on a Friday night, as hard as we try, we, no matter how many police officers we have, people double park, they park in fire lanes, they park by fire hydrants, and it really creates a situation when an ambulance has to get in and it's hard to navigate. We have kids running in the parking lot while people are trying to back up. So I want to create an environment down there where the parking is a little bit more structured, a little bit safer, and I think we can do two things. We can make the area safer, and we can make some money in the process. It's not just about money. So the idea is to do this. And Ducksbury High School already does something similar where they have an area where it's kind of VIP parking. We would make the entire junior lot, which is 150 spaces. Entire junior lot would be either prepaid permit parking that people can buy, and I'll explain that in a moment, or day of parking for $10. Everybody else would be instructed, if you don't want that and you want free parking, we're going to have ample free parking, you just come up to the high school. It's a very short walk. In fact, from a lot of the places in this senior lot up here, it's a shorter walk from there than it is if you're in the further part of the junior lot. We won't advertise that too much to people because we want them to buy the, the parking passes. But what this is going to allow us to do is to make sure we only have the right amount of cars that are supposed to be in that area, in that area. And I think the parents are going to enjoy it. It might even help me collect our user fees because one of the things that we will do, I will offer to every parent, this is only for football games too, by the way, for now, and we'll see what happens as we move forward. It's the only event that we, you know, girls soccer has a lot of fans, but nothing like football. I will offer to all the parents, at the time you buy your user fee, you pay your user fee, you can also buy a parking pass for $30. So hopefully that will encourage people to buy their parking pass. Anybody who doesn't pay their user fee, any general community member that wants to buy a season pass, that'll be $50. The day of the game, it will be $10. Probably going to have six to seven home football games. It's hard to say because you don't know about the playoffs. We have Thanksgiving this year. So I think it's going to be good. I think, we will definitely, I want to warn you, I mean, obviously, the first reaction from some people will be, you're charging for high school parking? And the easy answer to that is, we have free parking very close to the stadium for you to access. You do not have to participate in this, and it is, and I'm very sincere when I say this because in the grand scheme of things, we might make $4,000 to $5,000 in this, if we're, that's what I'm hoping we're going to make, which is maybe one or two teams getting uniforms, which is something that I would desperately like to do, but it's really going to make that area safer. And if you've been to a game, you know what I'm talking about. It's, it's really something that we've, kind of hold your breath every time that everything's going to be okay down there, and I think this is going to help alleviate that situation. And if we do it and we don't like it, we don't do it next year.
Well, and I know we had discussion, but to the rest of the committee, if somebody has a handicap placard.
Yes. Everybody that, anybody that has a handicap placard will be allowed to park for free in that area. The football team, the Gridiron Club, also would like to have one spot down there designated as a VIP spot, which they're going to raffle off, which I can't tell you how thankful we are for the Gridiron Club because, again, they're the ones that buy the uniforms, they're the ones that do the decals, they're the ones that do the banquets, they're the ones that buy the equipment that's out on the field, and we're very thankful for them. And so if you guys approve this, I would then approve to them to give them one spot that they can raffle off. They only ask for one game, but I would allow them to have it for the entire season, to have that as a VIP spot that they would manage for that.
Well, I'm trying to convince myself.
Yeah. Took me a while, Bob.
To, to vote for this, I guess, is, has, has there been any, any feedback from the community at all as to whether this would, would work? I mean, I'm sure you did some background on it, but I'm thinking.
I talked to Ducksbury. I talked to the Ducksbury folks, and obviously Ducksbury's not Whitman Hansen. A lot of people in Ducksbury, like, I'd love to park up front, because if you've ever been over to Ducksbury, it's a nightmare over there. And they said they've gotten, he doesn't recall anybody complaining about it. Again, I think it's because we have parking. If people come in and like, oh, my gosh, I don't, and I have to park down the street, no, you're going to have very easy parking. It's very simple, and I would communicate that to the entire community. We have Athletic First Night coming up next Wednesday, which, by the way, you're all invited to. We have a couple of great speakers that will be there, and I'll explain it that night. If you guys approve it tonight, I'll explain exactly what we're doing, so that I'll kind of hopefully head that off in a lot of ways. And again, the whole mission of this is for safety.
So if I come into a game, I would be directed where to park as far as free parking or the.
Yes.
$10 parking?
Yes, I'd have some signs made up that pointed where the free parking was, and then permit parking and per game parking prices there.
Dan?
I have a concern, only, I mean, I'd love to have the revenue coming in, but school grounds is a taxpayer's privilege to be up here. We shouldn't be charging to park up at a, a game.
Dan, I thought, I, I, I thought that as well, but.
I'm afraid of that feedback you're going to get.
But one of the things I would say is, they're taxpayers, and we charge them to come into the game, and they're taxpayers, and we charge them to go to the plays. You know, there's sometimes things cost, you know, it's, it's going to be a premium to be able to park there, and they're still going to have a parking spot. They're still going to have some places very easy for them to park. And I think, again, it comes back to the safety of the people that are there. You've been there, Dan. You go to a lot of games. You know how crazy it is out there.
Yeah, because sometimes I wish you could just stick a tow truck down there and rip them right out of there.
Well, me too. Me too.
Big buddy there.
Chris? It's been a while since I've been to a football game, Bob, but do you, do you have any traffic management details or anything now?
Um, well, again, we're very short on budget money-wise, so this would help us with that. That, I would end up hiring people to be down there.
Yeah.
We, we hire police details, and they do help before, a little bit before the game, and then obviously at the end. But when you have that many and you have people going multiple directions.
Sure.
It's very difficult.
So my thought on possible feedback might not be so much having a close parking spot to the field, but getting out. You know what I mean? If you're way up and, and there's a, it's tough to, it's the only I can imagine.
Oh, yeah, so, so to answer that question, yes. At the end of every game, I have police details directing traffic as they leave the stadium. The police details that are helping us with security during the game, I, I pay them for four hours, and they conclude by helping with traffic at the conclusion of the game.
Bob, to add to that, because I go to almost all the games, as you know. If you've ever been to a youth game here.
Yes, even grade years.
It makes the high school game, have you thought about adding this to youth games?
Well, let's try.
Talk about safety. It's disastrous when.
Yeah. I think this is something that if we have some success with it this year, I was going, that would be one of the things I would want to talk to the youth people and show them what we did, and invite them to kind of take part in it as well. But I don't, I, I have to be honest, I don't know how this is going to work, Bob. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
When I found out that Ducksbury was doing it, when Fred first proposed it, I, it kind of like made me a little bit skittish about it, but the more I thought about it, the more I thought it was something that's worth at least trying.
Have you heard of the communities that have tried this at all?
Just Ducksbury is the only one that I know of. Just Ducksbury's the only one that I know of.
Bob, I went to Ducksbury to answer that question. Poor and rainy night, I'm with 40, we go to Ducksbury. We pull in, they have a horrible parking lot to start out with. They've got all these roundabouts, and it, it's too busy. So we pull right up front, whoa, we're sitting the car, it's pouring rain out. Guy comes over, knocks on the window, says, "You've gotta leave." "What do you mean?" He says, "It's fu, people pay $500."
Yes, they pay more.
There's, there's silver, and there's gold.
And that includes admission to the game?
Yes.
That includes admission to the game.
And so we had to move. So as we moved naturally, other people moved in, and I, the same thing was happening as, as it went on, so. This isn't Ducksbury, I understand that, and I'm not putting...
No, I, I understand, I'm just thinking it's like fee, 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 and I just have a problem with, with fees. I understand the purpose.
But, and they also have, and then, how I got myself to this is that they also have very convenient parking up top, as long as they recognize it. Because I'll tell you that in a lot of places up in that lot, you will get to the field quicker from the upper lot than you will from the deepest parts of that lower lot. So, it's, it's not a fee, they don't have to pay that fee. They can park for free, we have a spot for them, and they have that if they want it.
Hey, you're giving away our secret, though, when you park at that corner.
Yes, right, right, right.
Go ahead, Ally, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
No, it's okay. No, I just lost my train of thought. How much is it for admission to the game?
Five dollars.
Five dollars. So what if you were to package something where if you buy a season pass, maybe increase the price a little bit more, you get into the game for free? Because you're paying for the game, you're paying the user fee...
So that's what Ducksbury, that's what Ducksbury does. That's what Ducksbury does. To me, it's just harder, so Ducksbury AD explained to me what he does. Is, they have this ticket system where they get a ticket from him, that he then, it's really hard to keep track of. So one of the things I have to do for the auditors, is to be able to tell how many people came into the game tonight, how many people paid, this is how much money we had. So that, they know that nobody's doing anything funny, and that this is how much money should be there. So if I had people coming in a carload, and maybe that car had two, and then that car had five, and they're just coming into the game, it'll be really hard for me to account for the number of people that were there. And so that's one of the reasons why I decided that probably, at least right now, that's not something that I think I wanna... Logistically, I've never been a parking lot attendant manager, I don't know how this is gonna go. I really don't. I'm coming to you with an idea that I think can solve two problems. And we can try it for a year, and if we don't like it, we can undo it.
My next question was, who's going to be monitoring this? Who's gonna be watching the parking lot and letting people in? And how are you gonna know who has the season pass and who's paying?
Right. So I will, um, hire people for that, for parking lot control, and I'll use the revenue from this to help pay for that. And we will make up passes that they, that will be numbered, and I'll know who has whatever number that it is. And we'll be giving to them, to the people that buy the passes. They'll get that, they'll get that, and I'll be able to know who has what pass, and how many we've given out, and how many spaces we can sell.
Mike?
Yeah. I think between safety and revenue, I'm all for trying it this year. I think it's, my scale would be that kids, they had to pay to come, and not coming to the game would stink. Well, like you said, they, many free options up back, I mean, you gotta walk. That's where we park, I mean, it doesn't bother me. But I'm all for trying it.
And the other thing that, that's another really good point, Mike, is that, uh, one of the things that's gonna happen is the people that are gonna buy these will most likely be the adults, the better drivers. This parking lot's a lot easier to navigate, and those student drivers will be up here in the free parking.
Okay, we've already got into discussion without a motion. I kinda let that get away a little bit, but that's all right.
Make a motion to proceed with the parking fees as presented.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Set.
Mr. Boyd, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
When's that meeting? That you have?
Uh, Wednesday night.
And when's it gonna be?
In the Performing Arts Center.
What time?
So we have, so six o'clock is when most of the program starts. That's the best time to come.
Approximately, how long's that meeting last?
That's gonna go about two hours. We have a sports psychologist that's coming in, she's, uh, she deals with positive psychology. And we have somebody that's gonna speak about substance abuse, chemical health, safety for our students. Our athletic trainer will have a presentation on her, the concussion protocol, and general safety. And I'll give some of the school rules in terms of eligibility, and some of the other motivational thing that we, things that we hope the students get for over the summer.
And the parking lot will be discussed?
Parking lot will be free parking.
No, 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 no.
So I'm, I'm gonna explain it to them, it's not gonna be a discussion like, what do you guys think? Because if you guys vote on this tonight, then...
No, no, I understand that.
I'm gonna move forward, and I'm gonna explain to them the reasons for this. I'm gonna explain to them about the safety. And a lot of parents, I've had so many parents tell me, you know, like, that they get very worried about what happens there. That, Ernie Sandlin is the best. I told him, I, I was really worried about after school, when kids leave, if you're ever down here, when they, kids will cut down that junior lot, and they're flying down there, and all you need is one kid to come out. And I explained that to Ernie, and Jeff and I had that meeting, and next thing you know, he's got those speed bumps out there. That parking lot, is that parking system, you guys know, this whole school, the parking is a problem. The entries to the school is a problem. So we just have to make the best, yeah, we have to make the best of what we can do with what we have. I think most people are gonna be agreeable. If not, they'll be throwing darts at me. I'll do it right after the positive psychologist.
Dan?
I just wanna see if we could just make it for like a one-year trial?
Yes.
And then revisit this.
We, we've already discussed, we're gonna make it as a one-year. And we'd like you to report to us at the end of the year whether it's working, or whether it's not working.
Yep, I'll come back and give you the complete feedback. You know, I'll keep a notebook in terms of the discussions I have with people, and I'll let you know how much money we make. I'll let you know where that money was, what it was used for, and I'll let you know that it, do we feel like the parking lot was safer.
Bob, I'm assuming that Mr. Simonac and Mr. Jones are...
In all honesty, I haven't had a chance to talk to Dr. Jones about it yet, but Jeff and I have been on, been discussing it. And we're on the same page. And if Dr. Jones doesn't want it, I won't do it.
Anyone else before we move to the vote? Okay, so the motion is to accept... What do you want? The motion is to accept the proposal as proposed.
That's not what I wrote, but that's okay.
There you go. Michelle, you're gonna be paying a parking fee, keep it up. Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much, guys, thank you, thank you.
Bob, when do you want my money?
Okay. Back to the agenda as it is.
One of the things we just wanted to do for you this evening, I know you've just met our new principals. We still have openings. They're moving forward, as we mentioned to you earlier, with replacing the Duval principal position. We hope to have information for you very soon on that. We also have openings for assistant principal at Indian Head School, and assistant principal at Whitman Middle School. So those are beginning to move forward now that we have the principals in place. So, that's what we're working on, and as we said, we're very grateful to the folks who've been working with us on these search committees. As you know, money was put in the budget to begin a plan to add one-to-one devices to the school system, and Chad Peters is going to report to you about that now, and you have a piece in front of you.
Thank you. I just wanted to give an update on the Chromebook situation, that, and the quantities that we have, just going from the year, 'cause I know that that's been a hot topic with everyone, and we've been accumulating Chromebooks over the year. I believe we've added 600 or so over the year, since the beginning of the year. The total that we have right now is about 1,760 Chromebook devices, spread out through all the schools. And the, on the front page, it actually has a breakdown per school. The, if you remember back when we went through the budget, we went through a bunch of different scenarios on how we were going to look at the one-to-one initiative. And we looked at it from a one-to-one, where every student got one, or we were going to do a cart-based, which is, excuse me, a cart of 25-plus devices in every classroom. When we did the numbers, the carts actually come out to more devices than the actual students themselves, because the number of classrooms, and teachers, and ancillary elective classrooms, and things like that. So, we, in talking with the principals and the administration, we were, we decided to go towards the cart-based deployment of the, of the Chromebooks. And we've been doing this for the last three or four years, and it's worked out well, having a cart. And up till this point, the teachers have been sharing carts, moving them around, and they have a calendar and things like that that they've been doing. But over the last year, we've been getting, we've been increasing the numbers up to the 1,700, and it's been getting a lot better, we've been, been spreading them out a lot more, and more teachers actually have devices in their classrooms. So, I wanted to give an update as to where we are now. So we're at the 1,760, we're probably, in order to fully get to the one cart in every classroom, it's gonna be in the neighborhood of about 4,000, somewhere around there. So we do have a little ways to go. But because we had the money we put into our budget for this year, the $40,000, to start this initiative to little by little increase the number of devices, we were able to, we're able to get 600, 600 new devices for next year. And the breakdown of that is 475 for the middle school, and 125 for the high school. The high scho, uh, the middle schools were prioritized because of their math and science program that they're, that they're using, that they started this year, and they're, they're gonna be moving into next year fully in the seventh and eighth grade, where they need the Chromebooks, because all their curriculum's online. So we prioritize them first. And once we, once we acquire these 475 for the middle schools, they'll be in really good shape for one-to-one. I think they're gonna be, I think they're gonna be about four or five carts of devices short of having one in every classroom in the middle school. So, we're actually in really good shape in that one. The best school actually is Duval. They just, they purchased 117 devices, I think, this spring, with a lot of the money that they've raised for some of the initiatives that they've been doing with the PAC and the PTOs. So, for their grades two to five, which is where we designated the Chromebooks to be used, they're almost at, I think they're four carts away from, three or four carts away from actually having one in every classroom for every kid. So they're, they've moved quite a bit. And a lot, a lot to do with their smaller enrollment size, and it's kind of decreasing over the last few years, but they've bought a lot over the last few years, and this year, they, they made a big push with the 117 that they did. So they're pretty close to being one for every student in the classrooms. So, what I did was, I just updated this chart for, during the budget season, I, I originally gave this, and I just updated it for the new Chromebooks that we purchased over the year. And then, taken into consideration, we'll be actually moving forward with 18, 19 purchase of the 600. Any questions on that?
Christine?
Yes.
Go ahead, Fred. I think we're gonna ask the same question, go ahead.
It was my understanding that our budget, our operating budget, that these were taken out of.
No.
It was my understanding that we were, and that we were doing only level services.
We said that when we, the things that we took out to get to the 9% increase in the assessment were the exact positions we told they were going to be, but we never once said we were taking the 40,000 out. We felt they were instructional supplies. They're needed absolutely to be able to provide level services as we move to testing that has to be done on one-to-one devices. Amy Fleck at the high school is moving to MCAS. It's going to be computer-based at the high school, and she absolutely needs it as an instructional supply, so that students know how to take a test on a device.
I know we got up on town hall floor, and we stated that we were asking for exact level services.
We did not say exact level services. We've been very clear...
Providing the same services that we did the prior year...
Absolutely.
With the exception of one teacher that we were eliminating from Conley. That, I believe, is exactly what we were, was the understanding.
And we said we were cutting the things that we added in the budget. We have never cut the 40,000. Every bit of information we gave people never said that we were doing that. We can't afford to.
That wasn't my interpretation at all. I don't think anyone ever had said that, I don't know if, maybe I missed something.
We never once said we were eliminating that. I have people here who will, who've been part of the administrative team and leadership team. I don't think, educationally, we can afford to do that. We would be selling our students way short.
Anyone else? We're not looking for a vote, this is just a report on...
Nope, second half, yes, there's more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This was just kind of, I just wanted to give an overview of where we are, where we're going.
Continue on.
And then the second page is the, to put forward that 40,000, that first part of the lease, which is the, the four-year lease for the 600 devices, that would be leasing over the four years. It's a lease with a dollar buyout, and we'd own them at the end of the four years. So, that second page is a lease agreement for the four years, for a total of $38,575.28 per year, for four years. And the reason we need the vote is because if we, if the district goes into a lease or financing agreement of more than three years, we need the school committee to vote. So this, so this is the, this is the agreement, this is the lease agreement right here, and it's, was put together through the state Massachusetts Blanket Contract for leasing. So it's under the Chapter 30B approved vendors.
Chad, the grid on the first page reflects the lease, correct?
Yes, yep, the, the one...
Forty, 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 forty.
Exactly, yeah, that's what we...
For the four years.
Exactly, yep. So it's CB01, Chromebook01 is the first year of hopefully continued purchase of Chromebooks to fully get to this one-to-one initiative. So it would go, it would go from July 1 through the 21, 22 school year. And at the end of that, we do own them. We did look at trying to get cheaper rates in order to, if we, if you do a residual, like if you lease a car, and you just lease it for the three years, and you give it back, or you buy it, we looked at that to see if we can get it cheaper, but there's no, there's little, very, very little residual value of the Chromebooks after the four years. So they said it's either one. You could give them back to us, or you, you could keep them for a dollar, and it's the same thing. So, we decided to keep them. And there's a lot of programs out there that companies will buy back technology, old technology that you're looking to get, to get rid of or no longer use. You can get, you know, pennies on the dollar or something to go towards a new purchase. So, we'll probably end up doing something like that. Any other questions I can answer on this, or...
Chris?
On page one, you have the current listing of Chromebooks. Is the current McQuan inventory listed in Indian Head? Is that how you have it?
Yeah, yes, uh, thank you. I moved around where they're going, so Indian Head and Hanson Middle.
Okay.
Hanson Middle has the fifth grade, there's one set of Chromebooks for the fifth grade, those are moved in, so that's what those numbers are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Fred?
Just looking at our handout at the town meeting, it specifically just says level services budget.
That's what we sold them on.
But level services...
Services does not include this, that's where we're getting mad at.
Well...
We went and sold to the towns.
That is not...
That's what we sold to the town.
Okay, we saw...
That's why we went up there, we told them we were taking this out.
What we told them we were taking out were the two special ed liaisons at the Whitman Middle School. We were taking out no-cost, full-day kindergarten. We never once mentioned that we were going to take out the supplies for students. Because in my thinking, these are students that are, these are supplies that our students need.
This is a level funded, though, that's the thing.
Excuse me, we didn't say level funded.
Level services.
Because here's what's happening in terms of supplies. What used to have been a textbook that we would have put into a budget, can't be a textbook anymore. When we purchased the middle school math and science program, that program is absolutely dependent on the use of Chromebooks for supplies. You cannot run the middle school program in math and science that you all approved two years ago without Chromebooks. So it's an inherent supply to the program. The same thing is true with the No-Adam program. You can't run the No-Adam program without supplies. So the services are the educational instructional services. So it would have been less than level services to pull those things out. We would have been falling behind. Our students are being, almost all of the Chromebooks that Chad has put here, the 1,760, have not even purchased with the operational budget. They are fundraisers from kids are doing fun runs, spaghetti suppers, it goes on and on and on. We have not even had a commitment to replacing technology for years. These are instructional supplies that are absolutely need, needed for level services. There was no intent, the leadership team, the administrative team, or anyone, to say that those had been cut. We were extremely clear to say to get to the 9% increase, we had to get rid of the two liaison positions and the other piece that was there as well. If you move on back through there, keep going.
Through this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keep going. I think you get way to the end, go all the way to the end, Fred. There you go.
Yeah.
If you, that's the piece where it will talk about, I think.
This proposed budget funds a level services budget, which provides students with similar services in the upcoming school year.
Yep. And then it talks about what we, but it is, it's similar services, because we...
It does not add new programs or positions. However, it does adjust for declining enrollment in the closing of McQuan Elementary School.
These are instructional supplies that are absolutely essential for our students to be able to access education.
Even conversation about the 40,000 perhaps being a capital expense as well, I know we had...
Well, because of the lifespan, we couldn't do it. But there was no intent to cut instructional supplies. We knew we could not have those positions and make the 9%. But our kids need this, if they're gonna be able to access education for the 21st century. There was no intent to try and not do what we needed to do.
I'm not debating a need, I'm debating upon...
Presentation.
Presentation of what we were told and what we...
Extremely clear in everything we said, never once did we say we were going to be taking that out. At least, I never decided.
It's an essential piece. If I can bring us back to, and I volunteered in the school for years, before technology in 2000, I was working with teachers that we were fundraising and buying our own Macs and so forth. And I remember at the Holt School, we had in the, what was that little theater auditorium? Part of it was the library, and there was a line of Apple IIEs, or they could have even been newer than that, or maybe even older. But we were advancing ourselves at that time, because you knew the nurturing of the students and their minds in developing them was going that way. And we were doing it before we could get to a technology piece. And then we had a technology piece. How does this relate? I can totally understand an electronic device taking the place of a book, a textbook, or a number of textbooks. I currently am spending a lot of time with first cousin of mine and her two daughters, 17 and 13. Without mentioning their dad, in, in his absence, I really feel I kind of, I mentioned to you last year, boy, I'd really like to adopt some kids. Well, I think I've adopted a couple cousins, because I'd do anything for them. We went on awards night last night. But, why I'm stepping into this is because I see what 13-year-old Hannah brings home for a Chromebook, and I see what 17-year-old Jocelyn has in her bag. I mean, the, this, in my eyes, it's essential. And I wouldn't even put it past anyone what that was or anything. Now, when she gets home, is she really happy? No, because she comes over Cousin Steve's house and sees him with his Xfinity Blast and now it's a whole different world, but never mind that. But it's, it's, it's not something that was purchased as a catalog, it was purchased as an essential item. And I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. I have, of 2018, 2019 budget proposals, and hopefully this will put this to rest, strategic plan... Strategic plan and priorities. Describe lower top priorities that have been included in the FY two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget. Elementary science instructional supplies. It talks about the Gelfland family and foundation and their financial resources at four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars to support the implementation of No-Adam. Excuse me. Then it goes on to say Chromebooks to implement year one of the multi-year technology implementation plan. Chromebooks purchased for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year will be used to implement the science and mathematics curriculum in the middle schools. Students in grade five, eight, and in high school take next-generation MCAS tests in science annually. These assessments are aligned with the two thousand sixteen and technology engineering framework. Students in grades three through eight and in grades ten take MCAS tests in mathematics annually. These assessments are aligned with the two thousand seventeen mathematics curriculum framework, pillar number two, pillar number three. Chromebook purchase for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year will be used for instructional purposes in grade nine English language arts to ensure that students are proficient in writing and responding to prompts in an electronic format. Students in grade three through eight and ten, and grade ten, take MCAS tests in English language arts annually. These assessments are aligned with the two thousand seventeen English language arts curriculum framework. I don't, this, you have the budget. It's in the budget book? Ally, just so, I think we had a little confusion.
That was, that was in the original budget proposal before cuts were made.
Right.
And I know it was in the original budget proposal. It was my understanding, and perhaps I understood wrong, but I think Dan understood the same way, that that had been something that had been cut.
Those didn't need to be cut to get to the nine percent. And when we met as an administrative team, I think we all felt very strongly that we could not move forward with instruction without being able to do that. Because things have changed so dramatically, the other option with math and science at middle school would have been buying the textbooks, which I don't believe is a good use of taxpayers' money because they go out of date so quickly. And the other concern is we are moving forward to a high-stakes test at the high school that's going to be entirely electronic-based, and our students need to be prepared for it. So I believe as a leadership team and administrative team, we felt that this was absolutely essential to the budget. The other pieces were extremely important as well, but we were able to get to the nine percent. Clearly, if we'd had to go below the nine percent, everything would have been on the table. But our understanding as a team was this is, you know, what you call level funded, level services, whatever it is, educationally sound and absolutely what Whitman-Hanson students need to be able to compete with other students in other school districts who have many more Chromebooks, and most of them haven't been purchased through spaghetti suppers. So this really needed to be in the operational budget. That was the thinking. No intent to try and fool somebody or say we're not doing what we're doing. I think we're very transparent and, you know, maybe we need to be more so in the future. But clearly, our students need this if they're going to be able to reach the standards we want them to be able to. So apologize for any confusion.
I appreciate the need, and I'm not questioning the need. I'm just questioning the message that I felt we were given and the message that we ended up giving.
I was extremely clear as to what we needed to cut to get to nine percent.
Nine and a half.
And I want to thank Chad for coming up with a very creative way to do this. I mean, I would love to be able to have the resources here to just be able to put all the carts in all the rooms and be done. Because that's what we need to do, but we can't afford to do that, so we have to have creative solutions. And I appreciate the work he's done on this.
Okay, so an entertaining motion to accept the four-year lease as proposed. So moved.
Second.
Chad, that's what you're looking for?
Correct.
Four-year lease as proposed in your handout.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Does everyone understand what the lease means? Now would be the time to ask before we vote. What's the year?
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty?
Goes eighteen through twenty-two.
Everybody understand that? It's two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
For a total cost of one forty, one hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Everyone understand? Questions? Jeff, do you have something? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, there were some questions about why we're doing a superintendent's evaluation. It's required by DESI to do a superintendent's evaluation, no matter whether the superintendent is retiring. And every year, one has to be passed in. I had that question asked me, so I confirmed that that was what needed to be done. And that's, that's why we did it. We didn't do it trying to take up anyone's time. It's something that's required. And I have the evaluative report in front of me. Step one, assesses progress towards goal. The four different criterias that could be voted on, and we rounded them out. We, well, actually, we didn't round them out, you'll see. We had zero that did not meet. The next one was some progress. The next one was some significant progress. The next one was met, and the next one was exceeded. We had nothing until met, which was three, and exceeded, which was four. The next progress towards goals is student, student learning goal. Same thing, three met, four exceeded. District improvement goal, we had one significant progress, three met, excuse me, and three exceeded. Going down to step two, assesses progress, performance on the standards. The standards are unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. The first one's instructional leadership, three proficient, four exemplary. The second standard is management and operations, three proficient, four exemplary. The third one is family and community engagement, one needs improvement, three proficient, four exemplary. The fourth standard was professional culture, four proficient, three exemplary. The next one was overall summative performance. The standards were unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. We had three proficient and four exemplary. And that is the overall report. I'm just looking to see if there's any comments. So far, here's one comment. Dr. Gilbert Whitton performed very well against her stated goals for this evaluation period. In a particular note, she did an outstanding job delivering against SMART Goal One as various curriculum-related achievements have improved the district over this review period. She has met expectations relating to the transitions due to the closing of McQuan School. As it pertains to SMART Goal Four, she has served as a leader throughout negotiations, preworking the regional agreement and the budget process. Dr. Gilbert Whitton also played a role in continuing to maintain net level services throughout this, excuse me, this year's budget process. During her time as superintendent, it's clear to me that Ruth has done everything in her power to put students first and to find ways to improve Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. She will be missed, and I wish her nothing but the best as she transitions into retirement. Although this is evaluations for one year during my four years on the Whitman-Hanson School Committee, Ruth has clung, has done nothing. But this one's not tight. This one is written, so I'm trying to read through it. But exemplify the position of superintendent, what it means to be truly accomplished and successful superintendent. Ruth is an amazing professional. She leads us and pushes us constantly, constantly in the district to, if not be on the top, then to strive to do the best. Students, parents, teachers, leaders, citizens, Ruth keeps all of them moving and striving. I wish Ruth the best in the next of her journeys on her life, and wholeheartedly thank her for everything. Dr. Whitton has continued to do an outstanding job these most difficult times due to budget constraints. The school system is run very well, and education continues to improve with her leadership and the strong, and the strength of administration and staff. Dr. Whitton has worked very hard for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District in her years as superintendent, and I wish her well in retirement. And that's all I have. Now, I would also, she's not, well, she's done. I would also like to remind everyone, because the next thing is on you, Christine. This is going to be the superintendent's last school committee meeting.
It is.
So I'd like to thank her for her twenty-four years of service to the communities of Whitman and Hanson, and for all the things that she's done for thousands of students, I might say, that have passed through the buildings, as I said on graduation night, although everybody on the stage, we're having a little trouble hearing. She has always been something to everybody. When you work in a district with hundreds of people, every day you have to be something to somebody or everybody, and it means a lot. And she's done a tremendous amount. Do you want these back?
I think Ruth gets a round of standing ovation.
I wasn't done yet. Jeff, next year, any long-winded speeches, I'm going to do just what Michelle did. Done! I just, thank you, Michelle, for teaching me that. So, do you?
I'll take it. Got them.
Here, you put them right there.
All right, great, thank you. Well, I would just like to thank you all for the support. This is, I'm, I'm not sad I don't have to do my evaluation in public anymore. That's really one of the more challenging things that happened over the evolution of this position. But, you know, we have a large committee, but I think we've, you've all worked well together. We really do try hard to work with, and do what's best for students. So it's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you. This has been, I think, one, a very unusually difficult school year. I've had a three-day-a-week person in Roseland Dorans. We've had some other challenges that have gone on as well. But I think we got a tremendous amount accomplished. Closing of the McQuan School, that, that's going to happen, and all those things are going to take place. The regional agreement, really happy that it got finished up here tonight, and then very excited that we got through Unit A of collective bargaining agreement in probably some of the shortest time we've ever been able to do. And that doesn't get done alone. That gets done with a great leadership team, administrative team, the support of everybody who's here this evening. So I just want to thank you all for the support. Never once in a million years did I think this is what I was going to do when I grew up. But I still love what I do, and I wanted to leave still loving it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm doing like Michelle. Go ahead, Vaughn. Be quick.
I would like to thank Ruth for being superintendent for these years as well. The superintendent's job has changed over the years.
Oh, yes.
And it's starting, I think, a lot more complicated. I think a lot more hours, a lot more responsibility. You have the state that's constantly probably in your face as far as you have to do this, you have to do that. I think it's very time-consuming, and I think it takes a special person to do that job. It's, I don't see it as an easy job. Filling out the, filling out the evaluation form, sometimes it's difficult to choose. I know it's been a difficult year with the closing of the McQuan. The budget process is always a huge problem. Hopefully, we can change that up a little bit this year. But as being a super, no, I'm, it's not me, but as you being a superintendent, I'm sure there are a lot of stressful days or stressful weeks. But I congratulate on your ten years as superintendent, and I know, I'm sure it hasn't been easy, but I, I think overall, you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And Jeff, good luck.
Okay. Christine, budget update, and we're going to vote on some line item transfers?
The one-pager, it's the year-to-date revenue report. The first column shows what we anticipated, what we budgeted or we thought we were going to receive in revenue. If there was any adjustments in the year, which there has not been, that, then you see the revised estimated revenue. Then you see actual year-to-date revenue. That's what's actually have come, has come in. So if you look down to the Medicaid line, we do expect one, expect one more payment in June. So I'm hopeful that that is going to exceed the thirteen thousand, which we anticipate getting. We have one more payment of Chapter Seventy. The charter school, don't let this fool you, it's up a little bit, but the assessment is up as well. So it's, it offsets. Then you have the transportation, which we get one, one payment in January, and then we'll get one at the end of June. The homeless transportation actually was based on, two years ago, we received that in July. So that was a little bit more than what we anticipated. And then the interest income, we budgeted thirty thousand, and we've already brought in over sixty-seven thousand dollars. And since the last time I reported out on this, I made the two journal entries, one's for circuit breaker that we had budgeted, and one for the E and D that we had budgeted.
Questions, anyone, for Christine? Christine, I'm sorry. Glad on the poll involved there.
The next, is you have several pages. It's the year-to-date expense budget report. First column is the original appropriation. The second will be the transfers and amendments, which I'm bringing one, the first one to you tonight, and that would be the revised budget. The year-to-date expended is the actual money that has gone out the door, whether it's for goods, services, and or payroll. The next line is the encumbrance and requisition, which shows you what still is encumbered. We haven't received a good or service. As you know, the budget has been frozen, I believe, since February. Still have some concerns of the substitute lines because there's been several leaves of absences that have been paid. So they're getting paid as well as the substitute is getting paid. Also, this, my concern is still with the special education budget. As of today, let's see what pages that are. Page nine at the top. You know, roughly right now, the sped budget is over by three hundred and seventy-five thousand, which I anticipate there's going to be a couple more transportation bills for June that are not included in this. So to, we will be looking at using the circuit breaker that has come in this year to offset the unexpected special education cost.
Questions, anyone, Fred?
Well, what have we received in for circuit breaker this year?
So far, we have received, so far, we've received just under five hundred thousand, but we're expecting another payment. But typically, we're a year behind. So when we balance this year's budget, it was the money that came in last year. And this, this year's money that comes in, we typically would use, offset the two thousand and nineteen. But since the special education budget is over, we're going to need to use the special, the circuit breaker that's come in this year.
Questions for Christine? In your packet, you will see line item transfers. It's no change to the budget. It's just moving what's been expended and what hasn't, moving it around. If you look at it, if you have any questions before we vote, an entertaining motion to accept the transfers, it is no change to the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just clarify, in their entirety as presented.
Thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Thank you. And in our, at our August school committee meeting, I'll bring the close-up transfers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
And I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
We had an addition to the agenda. This afternoon, I received an email from Mark Stefanski that he had some materials that he would like to declare surplus.
Yeah, I've got that. I've got that.
Yeah. Do you want to do it separately or do it now?
We'll do it separate.
Okay. I just don't want to, I don't have it on the agenda. And it's in your statement packet.
I'll get it.
Great, thank you.
Okay. And that is the last superintendent's report that the superintendent's going to be giving us here at Whitman-Hanson. Jeff, I don't know why you're smiling. You're on the hot seat next.
No, he'll do great.
Okay, okay. McQuan's closing, McQuan School closing and transition, you, you heard what was going on earlier. I, I happened to be here today to drop off some papers. I, I happened to be here today to drop off some papers. To Michelle and the fire, one of the members of the fire department inspection team was here, and the building inspector, Bob Curran, was also here checking out what's going on in the district and how it's coming up here for the different renovations that we're making, and they seem pleased with how it's going on. I think everything is on a schedule, and I believe that you'll hear the rest of that from Mr. Small when he gives his report on facilities.
I do wanna mention one thing. There is a meeting that Mr. Tranter and Dr. Wilcox are going to do for parents. We said to them, we would do another parent meeting at the end of the school year, and that's scheduled for June 18. So, we didn't talk about that at facilities, but that is coming up. And just to allay anyone's concerns, we did have, also had a meeting, Jeff Simonak, Christine, a bunch, Pat, a bunch of us were there, meeting with McQuon and Indian Head teachers a couple weeks ago, just to get their concerns as well. Trying to make sure this is as smooth as possible.
Okay. Moving on to new business, we did the school board, we did the parking fees. We need to vote for the position of records access officer.
And it could be either the superintendent or the assistant superintendent.
One of the two. It's going to be Mr. Simonak?
Or Mr. Farrell.
Or Mr. Farrell. And seeing as Mr. Farrell isn't here...
Make a motion or appoint Mr. Farrell.
Second.
Okay, that takes care of that.
He shouldn't go to New York.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes, you'll listen.
George, you're it.
What's with it?
He'll do a marvelous job with that.
Okay. Next, we need to, we've gotta have a minor revision to the medications policy and the medications guidelines about administering medications to students. There's been a small change. Has the policy subcommittee seen this, Ruth?
No, this was one, I met with the nurses, and it's really just a quick language change, so we didn't really feel there was a need to bring the committee back for that kind of a thing. Basically, they, gotta find it. Must be in the other. It's just minor language, language changes, yeah. I don't have it there. Oh, there we go. So, maybe I can try. First of all, they had put together this medications procedures a while ago, and they had wanted to make it be a policy. Well, it's too detailed, it changes over time, so we felt that it would be similar to what you all do with building costs and building fees, and have that accepted. The other, the only difference really with administering medications to students is that they had to drop out a paragraph that said that they could designate other people to give medications, and they really can't do that with those exceptions. We put the field trip exception in because they required, that's the new paragraph that's in it. That's really what's different, that top paragraph on field trips. That was it.
Field trips include unique one-time events, which are not part of the regular school schedule, involve travel from the school site. Upon receipt of the certificate of registration, field trips from the Massachusetts Department of Health, a delegation of prescribed medication to unlicensed, properly-trained adults is permitted for the limited purpose for students on field trips and short-term special events when a school nurse is not available. School district, through the district nurse leader, register with the Department of Health and train personnel on the use of epinephrine auto-injectors.
And those are all the same. None of that's, none of that's, it's only that field trip paragraph. Yep. So, we felt that was minor change, but clarification.
I entertain a motion to accept.
Second. It's written.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. School calendar revised.
Okay.
You have the calendar in front of you.
The main change was this. When the leadership team met, when we did the calendar initially, there was an interest in having parent conferences in the spring. We really hadn't brought that up when we were doing negotiations for Unit A, so there was a concern about that. And after some consideration and working with WHA, the feeling was, let's keep parent conferences the way they are, status quo for next year, and if there was going to be a change, they'd do that as a side letter next school year. So, that's the change. So, the one you voted before had parent conferences for elementary and middle school in the spring. Those have now been moved entirely to the fall where they were before. So, that's the big change. The other issue is, open house has been a little bit of a concern in terms of Indian Head School with all the changes, so that date may change. Duval and Conley are going to keep theirs the same.
I entertain a motion to accept the changes as just discussed by the superintendent?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just wanna point out that the first day of school would be August 29th. People have been asking, so...
Any other discussions? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, acceptance of gifts. This is always a pretty easy one. Dear Dr. Whitman, thank you very much for taking the time to meet with me on Thursday, May 31st, 2018. As we discussed, my family feels very fortunate to have all of our four children pass through the Duval Elementary School, and eager to give back in some small way. With this in mind, the Sullivan family would like to donate a digital display kiosk to the Duval Elementary School. The kiosk would be a freestanding pedestal design with approximate dimensions of 26 by 71 by 18 inches, with a viewing area of approximately 44 inches. Parents would be able to photograph examples of their children's praiseworthy work and submit the images to an email account, where the images would be verified for appropriate contact, content, and packaged for display to the kiosk for a specified amount of time, for example, one week. Instructions for the process would be provided by the Sullivan family with the assistance and feedback from the Duval faculty. Teacher would be able to load contact to the kiosk directly to add video or images from, of their own, from class projects to the parental submissions. As part of the project, I would happily volunteer to be responsible for the screen and packaging of the parental submissions to the kiosk for as long as he has a child attending Duval Elementary School. There are several varieties of kiosks, and I have included images and some samples with this letter. I will work with Ms. Stephanie Powles to find the best fit for the schools. My most regards, Scott Sullivan. I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Yes, Fred?
Just wanna clarify that the, where it's gonna be displayed in the school, that the content, that the faculty of the school and probably the principal's office would have the opportunity before anything is placed on the kiosk, you know, to give their approval.
We made that super clear when we met with Mr. Sullivan.
So, I guess my motion is contingent upon, you know, the faculty, the leadership at the school, you know, having editorial privileges and being able to preview everything.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much to the Sullivan family. That's a very, very nice gift.
That's awesome.
We have no field trips. I didn't see any in the packet. But we do have some surplus.
Bob, can I go back to the field trips? Bob?
Pardon?
Go back to the field trips? I just have a question about field trips, and I know it's under new business, I just thought, I think with moving forward curriculum coordinators and this and that, we've sent so much to make Hanson and Whitman together to when they get to the high school. I'd like to see, not that Whitman gets, goes on field trips, Hanson kids should go on the same amount of field trips or same places. I don't know how we can be teaching so differently.
I don't think we are, but I, and I think one that was a concern was really done by the art teacher. And one of the ideas was that students should have an art museum experience during their elementary years. But it didn't always just have to be the Museum of Fine Arts. But that was an understanding. I think as we move into the next school year, it'll be important for them to align the field trips. Plymouth Plantation, in my mind, has been across the, everybody goes, whether you're Whitman or Hanson. The intent is that they should be similar. Maybe not identical, but similar. Jeff?
With the new elementary leadership especially, there's gonna be a lot of communication about that, so I know that issue came up. We wanna rectify that. Maybe that's a more experienced approach.
Thank you.
And I think with just three schools, it's gonna be that much easier, too.
I think that what hap, what happened, Jeff, with this, what's brought this on is someone didn't go and someone did go, and the number wasn't equitable. Is that correct?
What do you mean, the number?
Like, one fourth grade went, one fourth grade didn't.
Yeah, Whitman went, Hanson didn't.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not equitable, it's wrong.
What you're talking about is, it should be equitable. If Whitman's going, Hanson's going.
And we've always wanted to, and we always look at...
That's what I meant, like, just to clarify that for somebody who might be watching. Fred?
And this is probably directed at Jeff a little bit as well. How difficult would it be to combine the schools for field trips? You know, so if it's the first grade that goes, it's the first grade of Whitman and Hanson. They're all Panthers.
I'm not sure how difficult, I just know that today, my son went to Fenway Park for fourth grade at the Hobble Rock School, and there's two other elementaries in Pembroke. They all go separately. Just because bringing that many kids attending on the sides of the class might be challenging for the venue and for the Pembroke staff. So, I don't know, it's a good question we talked about. I think what I wanna do first is get the three elementary principals on board and have a calendar around there, so we all know where everybody's going, so a lot of people are comfortable if they go down. I agree with you, and that's gonna be one of our unified things next year, is that pre-K to 12, we're all Panthers, we're all in Pembroke.
Right. And some venues can't take all the kids at once, so, you know, for example, MFA, Conley does Museum of Fine Arts, they do, they've done it for years, but they do it over three different days, because the museum can't handle everybody. So, it really depends on the venue. And also how they, whether they can get nurses, which is really what created the problem that we had this year, was having trouble getting a nurse.
Chris?
So, just to add to that point, I think we're seeing that a lot more at the youth sport level. So, one of the things that's changed a lot, like softball on the girl's side, soccer on the girl's side. It used to be Hanson, it used to be Whitman, and now they're combining. So, I think any opportunity to do some of that, it's gonna be helpful. It's nice, you know, I, I remember when I went through the school, it was, you really didn't get to meet the Whitman kids until like eighth grade, end of the year, when you were doing the sports stuff. Getting them together earlier, it's, it's a nice thing, so, to the extent you can kinda think that through, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Well, I think what's happened also too, Chris, is the class sizes have shrunk, 'cause I know exactly what you're saying. A lot of the sports groups have to combine to come up with being able to play in a league. They don't have enough numbers, which, years ago, that used to be totally the opposite.
Well, there are less too now, less different, different types of sports.
Exactly, way more.
So many.
Okay.
Thank you.
Subcommittee reports. Warrant Subcommittee has signed all the warrants, so we can move right on with that.
We need to do that surplus.
We didn't do it.
Pardon me? Michelle, did you have a question?
I wanna do your surplus.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was doing it, I got sidetracked.
The surplus and then the Subcommittee minutes for the warrant subcommittee.
Okay. I know what you're saying, I haven't... Okay, the surplus one. Dr. Gilbert Whitman. Due to the recent purchase of middle school texts, science textbooks, we now have an abundance of older modular Prentice Hall, Science Explorer texts that are outdated, copyright 2000 early, and no longer being used. There is a big list. In addition, there are some outdated high school science resources that are no longer being used. Items include various texts and quantities less than class sets, kept for teacher resources and video discs. We no longer have working video disc players. I respectfully request these items be declared as surplus. Mark Stefanski, Science Curriculum Director. I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, warrant Subcommittee. I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of May 24th, 2018, of the warrant Subcommittee.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Regional Amendment Committee, as you heard earlier, the men from Mars, as Fred put it...
Love saying it.
The men from Mars were here. They have had a conference call with all of the attorneys that were involved, and we have come up with a regional agreement committee that now needs to be voted by the selectmen, and then moved to the town meetings, and, and sent forward from there. So, I think that kinda sums that up. Policy Subcommittee?
Haven't met.
Facilities and capital improvement Subcommittee?
We met earlier this evening. We did get Ernie's report. In a nutshell, we did hear, McQuon closing is going as scheduled, teachers are packing up, things are being moved, they'll be stepping it up into higher gear over the next few weeks to get things over to Indian Head. Indian Head is pretty much set to accept them. The playground, a group of citizens has met, they've agreed on a color. They've just gotta go through the final preparations, and Christine, perhaps you wanna speak to just the final preparations? And then there's just one piece that's gonna be on back order for 10 or 12 weeks to get done, the spider climbing thing that, trust me, I'll never be on, that, that will be done, it's about 10, 12 weeks out, once we sign the contract.
Yeah, Ernie and I expect to, in the next couple of days, review the contract with the playground company, and hopefully, we'll be signed beginning of next week, so...
Ernie's also scheduling with the Whitman DPW to start on the roadway out here as soon as school's done, and start transition for the preschool to be ready for us. The inspections have been completed. Facility is pretty much getting up to snuff. There is going to need to be some site work done on the playground out here for the preschool. That will be done over the summer as well. They've got the cleaning schedule pretty much listed out, and by having McQuon not have to be cleaned, it helps. We also have the Conley that's down this year, so that it gives a little bit more flexibility to when SJ can be in and cleaning. They're going to need to be in some of these buildings over the weekends to do their cleaning, but we'll get it all done, and everything will look right. Duval, they're just tidying up the special ed classrooms. There's still a little bit of discussion as to exactly what's what, but Ruth and Ernie, I believe, are going over there tomorrow.
Gonna try, yep.
To make sure that we know exactly where they have the space, it's just exactly where things are gonna be put. Other than that, let's see, Duval roof repair, we're 90% done with the plans, and we look to hopefully complete that project next summer. Don't think I forgot anything.
Any questions for Mr. Small? Thank you. Legislative update?
Fred, for instance. The budget has gone to Conference Committee. The Senate is one of the things we're really looking at. There are four important items on the Senate budget. One is 80% reimbursement in regional school transportation. Christine, I know we've spoke, it's about 180-something thousand dollars.
Yes.
That we would see, if that does actually come to fruition. There is also a regional school foundation budget study that they have in, in the budget. There is also an annual fiscal analysis and public hearing resulting in a plan to fund 100% regional school transportation, 100% of charter schools, and 75% of circuit breaker reimbursement within three years. So, if that gets through, at least that's hope on the horizon, that we could finally see some legislation that would require them to live up to the obligations that they're supposed to be living up to today. There's also, on the Senate budget, 75% reimbursement in circuit breaker, as it says in the statute anyways. I also did receive a nice email from Josh Cutler today. I had emailed everybody asking them to, or I should say, our legislatures and the members of the Conference Committee, to please do what they could to adopt these policies. Josh will be meeting with one of the members of the Conference Committee tomorrow, and he has said that he will be putting in a plug for us and for these items, and asking that they can go forward, so his efforts are truly appreciated.
Any questions? Thank you. Pilgrim Area Collaborative Representative Report?
We will meet tomorrow night, potentially our last meeting of the...
We will meet tomorrow night, potentially our last meeting of the school year. There is, where I've been, even though Ruth's been the North River Collaborative Representative, I've been the liaison. And there was a meeting in March, and there's another one scheduled for June 21 at 4:00 p.m. And hopefully, if this continues in a good way, we will have those on a twice-a-year basis. But I will also mention to the superintendent, and the upcoming superintendent, and the Executive Secretary, we will need a letter for Mr. Simonak for the North River Collaborative.
We've approved it.
As of July 1st.
We already approved it, we just need to get the letter.
Wonderful. Yeah.
Just before.
And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Boyce? Keep in mind, we may have to meet in June, towards the, in the next week or two. There's a couple of things come up that may have to become, come before the committee. I just want to keep you abreast of that. I will be notifying Michelle to put it on the agenda, and I will notify everyone. If not, our next meeting isn't till August. This could happen. Fred?
And that's what I, and I must be brain-dead, and I apologize to the committee. Can't even read the simple agenda and go over the first thing on there. The property for sale that is behind us, that we discussed, we did discuss that at facilities, and we do feel that it has merit to bring to the full committee and to discuss further in executive session, different strategies.
So. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.